Good morning. I'd like to welcome everybody to the city council meeting. Would like to remind everyone, excuse me, to please make sure that all your cell phones are turned to the off or vibrate position. Also, please be advised, our city council meetings are broadcast on Comcast Channel 99, 182 U-verse, and the City of Gaston YouTube channel. This meeting of the Gaston City Council will now come to order. The Chair calls on City Clerk Ivica Nelson for the roll call.
Councilwoman Latham.
President.
Councilman Smith.
Here.
Councilman Avery.
Here.
Councilman Back.
Here.
Councilman Wilson.
Here.
Councilwoman Minatra.
Here.
And Councilman Robinson.
Here.
We have a quorum present, and our meeting is open for business. I'm going to ask Councilwoman Latham to lead the invocation. Please stand and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray. Father God, we come to you today first just to say thank you, that thank you, God, that you are the author and the creator of our faith. And Father God, we ask now as we handle the things that you have assigned to our hands to do, we thank you for wisdom, we thank you for knowledge, and we pray, Lord God, that your divine will be done for our city, as we ask your continued blessings upon our mayor, upon our city council, those who work in for our city and live in our city. We thank you, and we have your faith, God, to call those things that be not. So we thank you for a very successful city, Lord God, a very successful year. We ask for your continued instruction and your guidance. We pray this prayer in your son, Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the work session in council meetings held on September 10th.
So moved.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to approve minutes.
The Chair will entertain a motion to ratify payment of accounts for the week of September 6th through the 12th.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to ratify payment of the accounts.
Agenda item seven is for proclamations and commendations. Mayor, we have any today?
Mr. President, we don't have one, but we have one for Councilman Avery in District 3, for somebody he requested last week, but we failed to organize to get them here. So Councilman Avery, Brittany will be contacting you to organize that. You remember which one?
No, that, we got that taken care of. That was a proclamation for former Mayor Steve Meads, Secretary.
Okay, there's another one up there, too. I'll get with you on.
Okay.
Okay. All right. And any special guests we have here? Sometimes that glare from the back prohibits me from seeing y'all. I've had cataract surgery, removed my cataracts, and now everything's coming in. I can't hardly see, but anyway, I don't know if we have any elected officials today or not, but I don't see any. All right, then we'll move on to item eight, unfinished business. Eight A is an ordinance adopting the fiscal year 2025 budgets. This ordinance was presented last week for first reading and approves the following budgets. The general fund budget, seventy-four million, four hundred and two thousand, five hundred and thirteen dollars. Special revenue funds, ten million, three hundred and sixty-three thousand, two hundred and five dollars. Debt service funds, six million, nine thousand, nine hundred and sixty-five dollars. Enterprise and internal service funds, sixteen million, three hundred and one thousand, nine hundred and sixty-six dollars. Capital projects fund, ten million, seven hundred and forty-one thousand, one hundred and sixty-eight dollars. And capital projects fund two, nine million, four hundred and thirty-eight thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this ordinance.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Y'all were about to spend a hundred million dollars. Surely, somebody wants to say something.
I wish my wife was here.
Yeah.
She'd talk about it. But I will say this, there's been a lot of talk about it, and there's a lot of good things in it, and I think we've kind of beat that to death. But I will say this, that our budget is up eleven percent. So we estimated the budget being up nine percent. So it's a very conservative budget, even though it is an increase. Want to thank everybody for doing business in Gaston, and we continue to grow. There's a lot of ribbon cuttings planned for commercial development. John Moore's done a great job. We had Whataburger coming, about to break ground. Cookout's opening up. The Tropical Smoothie Place and Starbucks is opening up. We got some new announcements coming, so we're growing.
At the Game Day.
Game Day.
Game Day Live at the mall.
Had ribbon cutting already, so.
That was a good one.
And the theater.
Yeah, the theater's a huge investment.
So a lot of things are happening. You know, Janet showed the movie Beetlejuice the other day. Sometimes that's what I feel like, you know? But I will say this, I want to say this sincerely to the council members. This budget couldn't happen without y'all. It's, I crafted together, y'all handle it, and y'all pass it. I want to thank you, the employees want to thank you, as they did earlier in pre-council, and you're going to see a lot of great things happening this next fiscal year, and I'm excited.
Appreciate it, Mayor Ford. I will say that we met with the mayor and Brandon Phillips, the Finance Director, and others individually to go over this budget. So there's been a lot of eyeballs look at this. It's the City of Gaston's largest budget ever, and it's pretty aggressive, but I think that's what we were elected to do, is to grow our city. The Grow Gaston Survey that was done with, what, over two thousand respondents?
That's right.
From our city and even from outside the city have spoken very loudly, very plainly and clear, that they want to see Gaston move forward, and it takes spending money to move forward. And it takes being aggressive in what we're doing. So I want to thank the mayor and his team for providing the kind of leadership.
And I forgot to mention our team, but sometimes I think they're just me, too, but Ruth, Tina, John, Brett, Rod, and everybody the department has, Tracy. You're looking so sour down there. Smile. But I want to thank all of them. The way of the best employees, I'm telling you. They're phenomenal, and they care about you as council members and what you think, and I mean that sincerely. So that's been my message, if something happens, let's keep everybody informed. But I'm excited, there's some big things happening that y'all have passed, the master plans for the commercial development behind Arby's in that area. We're about to sign an LOI with a gentleman that's going to be the developer. It's going to be phenomenal down there. We're about to sign an LOI, or an MOU with the guy that's going to do the hotel here at City Hall. So, you know, we were able to purchase a building, Regions Bank, for 2.8 million, and thank goodness to Regions for being a great corporate partner. They're paying us approximately seventy-two thousand dollars a year in rent. So while we're going to have a new City Hall and move in, they're going to pay rent and pay for the purchase of the building. So it's kind of, you can tell God's hands over the City of Gaston, and we appreciate, and we give all the praise and glory to him, but I want to say thank you to the council.
All right. Isn't the Regions building appraised for about 10 million?
Fifteen.
Fifteen million?
Yes, sir.
We bought it for 2.8?
For 2.8. So we went yesterday, Heath and I went down, and they showed us the decor. Obviously, we took the wrong people, because we just, it looks good to me, you know? But, so I got Jill Edwards, who is a decorator, major in interior decorating, who's a city employee, who works for Ray over at the Museum of Art, asked her to go. Heath and I were like flies on the wall while she picked it apart and worked with architects, and the irony of the whole situation of the decor was, it's the Titans color, the carpet and everything. I was like, this looks like the Titans. So it just, it worked out great. That's going to be phenomenal, and that, what's going to happen over there at that complex is going to reinvent Broad Street. It's going to increase property value, which will be good for the area and for business owners, but it's going to be better for the employees, number one, but also better to the public. It's going to be ADA accessible. This building is a beautiful building, but it's seen its time. When it rains, rain comes in all of our offices. There's black mold in a lot of offices and condensation leaking everywhere, so it's just, it's not conducive for the public. And this is going to be better for the public and have a place for events for the public to enjoy, and also be able to conduct cities' business with better tax dollars in mind.
Thank you, Mayor Ford.
Thank you all.
Anybody else have a comment? Everybody?
It's great. It's awesome, and I especially want to thank John Moore for committing, no matter what the feasibility study said, to build a BMX track. That took a lot for him to come out and make that commitment. He said, Jason, no matter what this feasibility study comes back with, we are building this BMX track, and that takes courage to step out like that.
That's the first time John's ever been told that.
All right. Any others? Not, so we have a motion to adopt in a second. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the ordinance, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
All right, our next two items, 8B and 8C, we're going to, I think, can we put those together? I have it, we've been asked by the legal department to table these. I'll go ahead and read them to know what we're going to table. The 8B is a resolution establishing a facade improvement sign grant program. This resolution was tabled on September 10th until today's meeting. This is to provide an economic incentive to renovate store facades in historically commercial districts as identified by the Grow Gaston Master Plan. The plan will be subject to availability of funds. And then, item 8C is a resolution amending residential development assistance policy. This resolution was also tabled on September 10th until today's meeting. This is to adjust the maximum rebate amounts per unit for residential conversion and adaptive reuse developments and existing apartment buildings to account for inflation. There is some question about the legality of which funds to use and how to use those funds, and our city attorney, Lee Roberts, is further looking into that and has requested to have it tabled indefinitely. So if we could have a motion for that?
Mr. President, I make a motion that we table Resolution 8B and Resolution C indefinitely.
Second. All right. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to table both resolutions for an indefinite period, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries for the table.
Item nine is a resolution authorizing one-year moratorium on certain new business licenses. This is to authorize a one-year moratorium on business licenses for payday loan, car title loan, check cashing, mattress, car wash, automotive oil change and lubrication, storage units, tobacco stores, and vape shop businesses within the Design Review Overlay District. The city is in the process of updating the zoning ordinance based on the new comprehensive master plan. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Mr. President, we're asking, that expired and we're sunsetted, and we're asking it to be renewed while we're doing our new study as we speak for zoning.
Okay. All right. Any other? All right, clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Agenda item numbers 10, 11, and 12 are resolutions authorizing acquisition of properties by purchase or condemnation for the construction of drainage improvements. This authorizes agreements with Tillman Consulting LLC to appraise the property and assist in the negotiation with the owners, and Turnbach, Warren, Rice, Lloyd, Frederick and Smith, PC, to assist in obtaining title to the property. Item number 10 is nine parcels of property in the area of West Meagan Boulevard, North 11th Street, and Tuscaloosa Avenue. Item 11 is four parcels of property in the Dalehaven Place area. And then, item 12 is one parcel of property located on Ewing Avenue in the area of North Gaston Park, Goldenrod Avenue, and Presley Avenue. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt all three resolutions.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Yeah, Mr. President, just clarification again, as you said, these are all pieces of property that are necessary to be acquired in order to move forward with these drainage improvement projects that have been in the works for a couple of years now. So, I mean, I think collectively, this is about, what, 10 or 12 million dollars worth of drainage projects, just between these three resolutions right here, so.
That's right. This is the ARPA money, I believe, that we appropriated in the last term. I think the one most, well, they're all important, but in the Tuscaloosa Avenue Agricola Shopping Center is extremely important. That has been a very big dangerous problem.
So that's a lion's share of the ARPA budget. We made sure we kept intact what the previous administration and council chose to do so, because it'd been a waste of taxpayers' money to stop it halfway when we already did the engineering and all the pre-work to it and start the other projects. And we had to have all that money encumbered by this year, by the end of the calendar year. So Heath's doing a good job with engineering, that's why we don't have Heath here today, but we have somebody famous, so.
Yeah, that's right. Thank you, Mayor Ford. Anybody else?
Thank you.
All right. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt all three resolutions, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt all three.
Next is agenda items number 13 and 14 are resolutions accepting conveyance of property from Gaston Land Bank Authority for construction of drainage improvements in Adams Park. Number 13 is a permanent drainage easement described as the eastern fifteen feet of Lot 4, Mandy Thaxton addition. Item 14 is a temporary construction easement on a portion of Lot 4, Mandy Thaxton addition. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt both resolutions.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? I think this is a continuation of the previous. This is about the drainage and improving quality of life in those areas. I know all of these are, have been overdue to be fixed, so excited to see this move forward.
So we have a big vision for Adams Park, and Rod, Scott, and Tracy are helping us on this, and they've been traveling to Birmingham, and I think Councilwoman Latham has been to Birmingham with Rod and looking at some of what they're doing with their housing and working with Habitat for Humanity. So we got, we got a big plan coming on that one, so that's, we're looking forward to.
That's exciting. Good work. Any other comments? All right, clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt both resolutions, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt both resolutions.
Item 15 is a resolution authorizing approval of Alabama power permit application. This is required for the repair of two existing piers and seawall at Dubb Parker Park located south of the Gaston Sports Park. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
So, Mr. President, we're going to, it's back behind Gaston State Community College, and it's where the pier where the boats used to put in, and it used to be a public launch. We're going to turn that back into a launch. It's just not safe right now, and we didn't want to put all the money, taxpayer dollars, into the complex and not fix that, too. So we're going to fix the piers and the, where you go into the water, but if we have enough money left over, we're going to do the boardwalk, too, which I think we will, so we're looking forward to that. It'll be a nice added value to the complex.
Sounds good. Any other comments? All right, clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Number 16 is our last resolution, is authorizing approval of supplemental request to Tillman Consulting LLC agreement. This authorized by Resolution number R-107-24. This is for additional right-of-way consultation for the Hickory Street Bridge Replacement Project, and the amount is 1,885 dollars, bringing the contract total to 12,885 dollars. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
So, Mr. President, that's a project we're going to have to tackle. The bridge needs replaced. We're seeking some other additional funds and grants out of Montgomery and DC, and we're teeing it up, getting it all ready to be able to complete that project. But that bridge is deteriorating, and it's not unsafe yet, but it's becoming unsafe, and we got to address it.
I think it's just a very old structure.
It's a two and a half million dollar bridge.
We are blessed with many of those, aren't we?
Yes, sir.
That's right. Okay, any other comments? That's in your district, I believe, right?
Yeah, no, I'm excited. It's definitely in need of repair. The one thing I would ask, well, I can follow up, but Mayor, if you don't mind, on that Hickory Street, I know it's going to take us some time to get that bridge replaced, but a section of that guard rail is out on one side of the bridge. One side is still intact, but there's a section, it's been like that for a decade probably, where that metal guard rail that's just bolted down to the top of that concrete bridge.
Go ahead and fix, get it fixed.
If we could put some sort of temporary restraining or some sort of, you know, signage up there or something.
Done. Tina, good.
It's on the list. We're aware of it. It's on the list to be repaired immediately.
Good enough for me. Thank you.
Just that one.
Yeah, just that one little section of railing, even if it was some temporary barricades or something reflective.
All right, thanks. Any other comments? All right.
Mr. President, on the land, could we bring that back up? Councilman Smith was unaware that one of the properties is one that he owns and he needs to abstain. He brought that to our attention.
Oh, the one in North Gaston. Okay, I will defer to Ivica. What's the proper way to bring that back up so we, or Lee?
Can he just record an abstention?
Yeah.
Okay.
There we go.
The minutes' record will reflect an abstention.
Thank you.
All right, thank you all. Glad to do it. Okay, I think we still got a vote on that. Oh, yeah, we've got, that'll be next, right?
Yeah.
All right, so we've ended discussion on the bridge on Hickory Street, and we've had a motion and a second. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
All right. Item 17 is new business. I believe we have one this morning.
Yes, sir, Mr. President. This is a resolution from Fleet Maintenance rejecting the bid for bid number 3569. This was, the bid requested for fuel dispensing and management services, and I guess the bid came back a little too high, so, or no, yeah, did not receive a bid that was able to meet all bid specifications. Will rebid. So this would just be rejecting any bids that did come in that didn't meet specifications so that that clears the way for them to rebid the project. So if there's no objections, I'd like to suspend the rules and ask for consideration of this under new business today, please.
Second.
All right, is there any, oh, I'm sorry. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution as an item of new business today, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Move to adopt. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
All right, I believe that's all the new business. Item 18, department reports, committees, boards, we have any of those? All right. Item 19 is citizen requests. We have Kayla Cherie Wright and Siandra James with Blueprint University's student to startup exchange program. We welcome you ladies here this morning.
Good morning.
Glad to have you, and we have, there's a five-minute period, so there'll be a timer just in. If it goes off, please continue and finish your thoughts, okay?
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am? You sure can, yeah, come forward. You can give them to the clerk, and she'll pass them down. And if you want the front three to have them, that'd be fine, too.
Thank you. Good morning, everyone. We want to give special thanks to Mayor Ford, all of the council members, and community, I'm sorry, those in the community of Gaston, Alabama. This is a hard truth to face, but more and more young people are leaving Gaston. Am I right? Nobody leaves their hometown and family out of pleasure, but they do it out of necessity. How do we fix this? And how do we bring this to the city to continue to thrive with their families and their communities so that they are no longer separated? My name is Kayla Cherie Wright. I am the CEO and founder of Blueprint University. I have Ms. Siandra James standing alongside with me today. Blueprint University is a one-stop-shop hub for entrepreneurs. We bridge the gap between small businesses and Fortune 500 companies. With that, we in-house every initiative that small business owners need for their business, from funding, finances, business development, and much more. According to the latest data, up to 90% of startups fail. About 10% fail within the first year. In between the second and fifth year, around 70% will fail. So what happens in this situation? Some will try to find a nine to five. Others will become stagnant, lost and stuck, or file for unemployment, which doesn't do our economy any justice, while many others will move to bigger cities thinking this will solve their problem. And it doesn't always look that way. We have to get back to the core, and that's education. Lack of education, knowledge, and resources for small business owners is a huge gap, and we at Blueprint University are stepping in to close that gap. The second thing is not having the right team connected to small business owners. We know since COVID in 2020, a lot of our employees don't want to stay within working. So we figure out how to help small business owners keep employees by their side to want to be able to grow. The third thing that we lack is financial literacy. It's a big, huge disconnect within the school districts for our adolescents and within our community as a whole. It's not always about having enough money in the bank for small business owners. It's a matter of properly knowing how to manage those investments, those funds, and those expenses for their business. Now, I will have Ms. Siandra James introduce our exchange program, which you all have a handout as well, and she'll go more into detail.
Thank you, Ms. Kayla. So, as you said, my name is Siandra James. I am a resident here of Gaston, Alabama, and proud to be. So when I go out into the community and go into our school systems, you know, people don't know who we are, and they say, well, how did you come to Gaston? And I will say, on behalf of a resident that's here of Gaston, I would like to say, great job, Mayor, great job, City Council, because when the Blueprint was looking for places to go, Gaston, Alabama, they seen the need, and they seen the growth and the opportunities that are here within the City of Gaston. And so the Grow Gaston Master Plan is one that we wholeheartedly stand behind, and so we thank you for that. So with the Blueprint Student Startup Program, we have already initiated this program, the first program we started last week within the Gaston Job Corps Center, and today we actually start that program within Gaston City. And so with this program, we seek to go in and do our due diligence to make sure that there are no students that don't feel like they have the opportunity to remain here. Being a mother of two young adults ages 20 and 21, I can tell you, the first thing that they wanted to do when they graduated was like, I am moving away from Gaston, and I'm not coming back. I had to reassure them that change is coming, growth is here, and these are the opportunities that we want to make sure that we aim for, to make sure that every student has the information and tools and resources that they need to make sure that if they are looking to go into business entrepreneurship, that this is something that we're offering for them. So through this program, we're bridging the gap to make sure that we're aiming for those students to not only have an entrepreneur mindset, that they know about financial literacy, because this generation is very smart, and within that, these students are going to be the chainbreakers for their next generation of their family, and that's what we're looking to seek to have here in Gaston. So with this program, not only are we doing that, we have met one-on-one with different business owners here in Gaston and also department heads. Tomorrow, we'll be hosting our very first roundtable discussion to keep continuing on with this of how do we scale up and help students to reach their full potential when it comes to entrepreneurship here in the City of Gaston, to make sure that we continue growing. So tomorrow, the Blueprint will be hosting at the Chamber of Commerce. Thank Ms. Christie Robinson so very much for hosting that event for us at the chamber. We will also be with the city. Mr. Moore will be there, thank you so much. We will also be meeting with Mr. David Hooks from IDA. We will also have Ms. Adrian Reed, representative from the Career Center. We will have Mr. Carl Brady, representative from East Alabama Works. We will also have Gaston State there. That's Mrs. Bashia Woody, and also Ms. Dana Cornell. So in conclusion, we just thank you so much for the time and opportunity to get up and speak. We are thrilled to have this opportunity to go into our school systems and teach our students and encourage them and motivate them and give them innovation and hope that they can remain here in Gaston, because we are doing some great things, and we cannot they can remain here in Gadsden, because we are doing some great things, and we cannot do it without our youth. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much for your energy and your vision.
Mr. President, can I?
And for bringing hope to Gadsden.
Can I ask him a question?
Yes, ma'am. You sure can. Mayor has some questions, if you don't mind.
So, aren't Councilman Smith telling me you're related to Mitchell James?
I am. That is my first cousin, so the James names is, is one that I'm very proud to have.
He's a good man.
And he does an amazing job, and I think.
So how do y'all secure your funding? Where's your funding coming from?
See, I've been trying to keep them away from City Hall for this reason.
Yes, sir. Go ahead.
I have, we've boot-trapped this business. Essentially, it came, I'm a franchisee for Brings Home Security. That's how I built my capital back up through, through business, so I've just funded the whole program myself.
Wow, okay. It's very impressive, and I can tell through perception that y'all know what you're doing, and we need to help you.
Yes, and we're here to support. Thank you.
Let me just add, I get to pastor them, so of course, I'm excited about that, but Kayla's only 26, but she's recognized by essence as one of the nation's multimillion-dollar earner, several franchises that she owns between Dallas and glad to have her business here in Alabama. I'm not only a pastor, but I'm also a client as well. So right across from downtown fire station, when you see people in and out, just know that's the Blueprint. I'm excited to have them in Gadsden.
Yes, thank you.
Wonderful. And what you, your comments about our young people really resonates. I have children also, and fortunate they both live here and work in the, in the city, but there has been in the last, oh, gosh, I don't know, five years, kind of a resurgence of young people moving back to Gadsden. I think they have found out the grass may not be as green as they thought it was. They realize their dollar goes further here in Gadsden than it goes in maybe Charlotte or Atlanta or Dallas or Birmingham or somewhere like that. Those are all great cities, but, but there's, there's been quite a, a lot of young folks returned to Gadsden, and I think with an entity like yours, we'll even see more people come back to Gadsden. So thank you for what you're doing.
Yes, sir. Thank you so much.
It sounded like y'all were going before Shark Tank. Y'all were that polished.
They were very good, very good.
It sure felt like you.
Well, best of luck to you.
Thank you so much.
Thanks. We'll stay in touch. Before we go to the comments section, I do see someone in the back of the room that I overlooked, somebody very important to our city and county, Mr. David Hooks, the Executive Director of the Industrial Development Authority. Mr. Hooks, welcome. Glad you're here. Would you, have anything you want to share with us? Do you want to come forward and speak for a minute?
Just thank you for passing the budget.
There you go. Understand, noted. Thank you. Thanks for being here. All right, well, we will move to item twenty, remarks by Mayor and Council. Mayor Ford, we've had a.
Thank you.
A banner day here at the city of Gadsden.
This is great. And thank you to the council, and I thought you were gonna, somebody in, in the back, I thought you were gonna mention Patsy.
Oh.
She's got on the right shirt today.
That's right, yeah.
Yeah, so I want to announce there's two events this weekend. Please don't forget, I always say this when people say there's nothing to do in Gadsden, they're, they must not be listening. Art on the Rocks at Knockalooa Falls is this weekend. There's a fly-in at the Gadsden Airport, which we've got a lot of interest on that. It's from 10 to 1:00. And if you'll notice, going along Airport Road, we have purchased some banners with the KGAD. I believe that's the call sign for the Gadsden Airport. Is that correct? And it's just dressing it up. We also have some more banners gonna come along 411 with the G logo, which I think will be really nice. We're, the announced, the Grow Gadsden Plan received, oh, he told me to announce it. Okay, I'm reading it. We received an Outstanding Planning Award from the Alabama Planning Association, so we're very thankful for that and humble, but that's something that we all received. And we want to thank everybody for that, that participated in it. That was a big deal that went before the state, before this association, and they picked one plan, and they picked Gadsden. So that was, that's a pretty big deal. We want to thank Jay Freeman, the Chief of Police at Gadsden State, for joining up with the Gadsden Police Department, as I said earlier, going around to the school, talking about the anti-bullying campaign and the Golden Rule campaign. That's really a neat thing to see. We appreciate all the Gadsden State officers. They always help with wrecks and incidents at East Gadsden area, and we have a great relationship with our agreement with Dr. Murphy. The other night, Sunday night, I was riding through there about 9:00 PM, and I went down to Dubb Park, and I noticed somebody fishing, and it was a mother with two children, and very nice, and I stopped and talked to him. She said, we're just trying to catch some fish. We like to eat fish. I thought, what a great opportunity. And then here comes the Gadsden State security wanting to making sure everybody was okay. So, I mean, it, it's, it's a wonderful place over there, and it's well-lit. Congrats to the Challenger Learning Center. They're breaking ground this morning. We couldn't be there, and I want everybody to know that due to we're having a city council meeting at that same time, and it had to do with Governor Ivy's schedules, why they scheduled at that time. But we made contact with them and let them know. We all are appreciative of them. We look forward to seeing Gadsden City students and experiencing the STEM program, so that's something important. So that's all I got.
Thanks, Mayor Ford.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Latham?
Thank you, President Beck. Let me say congratulations to Blueprint. Thank you for a very impressive presentation. I've passed by a number of times and wondered what services you offered, so thank you, and we look forward to getting to know more about what it is that you do. Also, always good to see Mr. Hooks with us when he's here, and just a good day of government. I'll take that from District Seven. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilman Smith?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just want to first thank Mayor Ford and his staff, because I'm not sure if we recognize it, but Gadsden have had a complete face lift, and it hadn't even been a full four years yet. So I'm really excited about this new budget. I'm excited about the Grow Gadsden. I'm excited about all the things we talked about today, and the future is really bright for our city. So I just want to make sure, if you're not on board, everybody get on board, and let's continue to move forward, continue to progress. Great things are coming, great things already here now, and greater things even coming. Again, thank you again to the Blueprint, being here today. We're so excited about you all being here in Gadsden and all that you have to offer to the next generation. We got to rescue this next generation, so we appreciate that all you have to do. And thank you, Mr. President, and to the council as well.
Thank you. Councilman Smith. Councilman Avery?
Yeah, Mr. President, thank you. I did other comments as relates to Blueprint, continuous work and efforts, work, Ms. James, on numerous of projects, so continue up the, the good work. Want to, I, give an update to the community as it relates to District Three. I personally have not. I've got several calls this morning and just got a text. Haven't heard any update from ADM about tech tricks that is in District Three as it relates to the situation there. I'm going to, I'll continue to monitor my emails and send them an email. My goal has been to email them at least every other day until I hear something from them, and then, especially with having a productive meeting with information that is necessary for the community. One of my fears were what, what happened the day of the meeting is that someone, you know, that a fire happened, and on Henry Street, there was an structural fire to a vacant property that, that hasn't been occupied in several years. And so with confidence, I, I must say that I've driven the, around the area on numerous occasions, and so there has been 24-hour security there with confidence, looking forward for the fencing and the surveillance cameras going up to hate, at least to aid somewhat a comfort there to those residents that are close by. So continue to monitor your emails. When I find out something, I will do my best to let you know, and by way of our platforms. Other than that, there is a community meeting that we'll be getting up here soon. For some reason, I'm not sure what's going on as it relates to the gun violence. I don't think anyone was injured this past weekend shooting, but we've had some shootings on, I think, this past weekend and the weekend before that in District Three. There's, we have a, we have a, a, a tradition of not reporting things when we know that things are going on. However, I have a, a commitment to my, to those residents and to those citizens that live in those close proximity of those immediate dangers. Several houses, even one, even one of my homes have bullet holes in them from these incidents, and, and for those homes, they are very thin walls, so it did penetrate from the outside to the inside. They're very old, and so this can become a, it is a safety hazard, that's become, but the, 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 whatever the issues is, the community, we are, we will get together, we will talk about it, and we will find a resolution. Hopefully, that, that there'll be a viewing of the cameras that are there on 10th and Tuscaloosa Avenue where that incident happened, and that we can properly get a picture or video of those persons that was committing these acts. Listen, I know some of the residents are very, very adamant of getting business, those particular businesses shut down. Listen, to be at a defense at both, on both ends, the business owners, listen, have no, I guess, how can I put this? They have no reasoning of action of, of, and customer of theirs to go outside off their property to commit a, an act, okay? And then, and, and so when this business provides security and do those measure of things that they do to protect their customers, we have to be fair. And I understand that it's not also fair as a residence to be on their floor trying to duck and dodge possible bullets that are possibly coming and infiltrating their home. And so this is something that we, we will talk about. We will do our best to come up with a solution. I will email the administration to see if we can have some of those members from the police department or investigative units, whatever, whomever would need to be there could come so that we can have a holistic view conversation on how we can help. But again, when you call 911 and police come out and you don't do a report, it does not help the situation, okay? And then, when you also know whom these actors may be, that does not help the situation when you remain silent, okay? But with that being said, everyone have a good week, and that's it.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilman Avery. Councilman Wilson?
Thank you, Mr. President. I don't, I don't really have anything other than welcome to the community, guys. I love the initiative, and there's certainly a need for professional services and training in that field, so I could probably lend a hand on a couple of those things. If you need any help, feel free to reach out. Cheers.
Thank you. Councilwoman Monatra?
I just wanted to remind everyone, we had some information presented last week, but the Public Library and Gadsden City Schools are partnering with a literacy night this Thursday, 5:30 to 7:00. A lot of activities and a lot of information. We're really proud of the progress that we've made with the third grade testing and the percentage of students that were promoted to the fourth grade, but we just don't need to let up on our, really on our focus for literacy. So this Thursday, 5:30 to 7:00, at the Gadsden Public Library.
Thank you. Councilman Robinson?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to reiterate this week, it's gonna be a beautiful weekend in Gadsden, and we do have a few things going on. I want to, the Art on the Rocks at Knockalooa Falls is between, it's Saturday and Sunday, nine to five. Should be a good time, a lot of vendors up there, a lot of stuff going on, and the fly-in, is that Saturday is when the fly-in is? What time, did you say what time it was?
10 to 1:00.
10 to 1:00?
Yeah.
That's, that's an interesting thing. I might write out there and check that out. That's very interesting to me. I read about it. It's good stuff. And y'all did that last year, right?
This second time. Fourth time?
Fourth time, wow.
Yeah, it'll be four.
Well, it'll be good weather. It'll be fun to do. Like to thank all the department heads that spoke today and pre-council. I enjoy listening to them and see what they do and their, their outlook on, on the future of Gadsden. And Gadsden's in a way better place right now. It's, you know, we're not even two years in, like you said, Councilman Smith, and, I mean, I feel like Gadsden's a whole lot cleaner than it was two years ago. I feel like we're pointed in the right direction, and we're, and we're making some noise in the state of Alabama and just in the surrounding areas, so blessed and happy to be a part